...reasons why you can have an abatement. Errors, omission, illegality, irregularity, and infirmity. So, I don't know. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, so we will start with a motion to sign the warrants. Assessor meeting? Oh, wait. Sorry about that. Motion to start the opening assessors meeting.
Okay. You have your agenda in front of you, correct? This is a public session, there are four abatement items for a board review. There are three abatements for 2019. The green abatement, the first one, account 773, that was done last session. We need to have the paperwork signed. So I submitted new paperwork to give a signature with the proper date on it. Today's day instead of September. The other one, a bill went out for 2019, and Trino betrayed us again and sent the bill out. And there was a little cop did error there on my part, but anyway.
So it went to the wrong person?
No, it just went out to the right person. Or, yes, it went to Green.
And they've already approved that?
No, no, 1536.
No, the second one not approved. We have to approve it.
Yes, you have to move on that.
So, it's actually owned by Inara and not these people?
Yes.
So, we need to give them the money back?
Thirty-nine dollars and thirty-four.
I make a motion, we approve of account number 1536 and the amount of thirty-nine thirty-six.
Second.
All in favor? So, alright.
Yep. Okay, the next one, you know what that one is?
Yes, we discussed it at the last meeting.
It's a self-inflicted dilapidation.
So, in our last.
I already made them.
Oh, okay.
In our last session, and this applies to Dan and Jason, I had further discussion with our tax assessor on the, our ability to deny an abatement for good cause, although I thought we had a good cause. He informed me that regardless of why the dwelling is dilapidated, even though it's an investment, if they apply for an abatement within 185 days of the tax, of the tax commitment of the previous year, then
And this one, I didn't record.
Then, we should accept the abatement.
Yeah, cannot approve it.
With the irregularity.
You got it.
So, we do not want to have the irregularity. So I make a motion that we accept the 2019 abatement for account number 1707 and the amount of 583 for 15. So I'll second.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Now, as far as the 2018 one goes, we don't have any, any paperwork or any application anywhere that says that the, that the customer, the property owner, applied for an abatement in a timely manner for that year. So, that's up for discussion. We do not have to approve that abatement.
In the sense that there's no paperwork, there's no reason that's.
So, you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to deny the 2018?
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Let's sign the papers this time, apparently we've been signing them a lot.
You guys time.
Yeah, why don't you wait until we sign them?
Okay.
Taking the papers. We can get a little ahead of ourselves sometimes. So, don't sign the 2019 one, because that might be in there.
It's all in there, yeah.
So make sure you read that.
That's the last one.
So we're going to close after the assessor meeting, and we're going to open the select board meeting. And you need a motion to sign the warrants.
I think motion to sign the warrants.
All in favor? Here, can he take the papers?
They'll return those to you, right?
If you want to hand them to me.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate the tutorial on abatement.
Yeah. Really exciting stuff, isn't it?
It is, it's very interesting.
We just follow up on. I'll catch up with you tomorrow.
CNN, please. Well, we're signing a motion to approve the minutes as written from, what date was it?
September 16th.
September 16th.
Second.
All in favor?
I don't like old business. I think it's the refresh business.
So we're actually going to start with a notice of violation on the school, school and Pleasant Street property. Gary? Did you have anything? Gary has come up with a letter to send to that property owner. It's obviously collapsing. So it's just to inform them that we're, it's going to be given to our attorney for expedited legal remedy in the situation. So he would like a motion, and he just wants the select board's approval to send it out. So I'll make a motion, we approve the notice of the property map 15 lots 166-1. That's case number, dangerous buildings.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Gary. Okay, Stockford, you're on.
Thank you. I want to begin with thanking you and sincerely regarding the town's commitment to Stockard Park is admirable. And the visionary, I get that quite frequently, that the changing landscape every 15 minutes is just a remarkable piece of shoreline in this, of our 90s plus miles of shoreline. The maintenance is appreciated, the rededication is really appreciated, the town report cover is appreciated. And very, very quickly with the canopy projects, it's a small amount of money, around $30,000, or two-thirds of that is in kind. But it is for the tree planting, and I gave you the history of it for another time. But it's the intent, I think, that I'm very pleased with, is the engagement we have with people. And the intent is to form partnerships, and they're already there, and they're expanding. And we will update those because of findings given my opportunity. We own property in Campabello on Lovettville, but I have learned the Lubec. To an extent you can't believe. The Cuthbert Shore has certainly made that, but I have visited many of the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, the other sites owned by the private nonprofits. It is truly amazing. I mean, and it's, some of them are just as easy as hen day. Quandike Mountain. My spouse made it to the top, I just made it to the second. So, this is an, like, it's just an amazing vision of looking at Cuthbert Shore. But very, very quickly, we were very not fortunate. I appreciate the state's position about what's happened in the interim, provide us with an opportunity to continue the project in next year. And I just have a motion because in the past, it has been very helpful to have it on the record. And I think it was the chair who used the word facilitate in the past, so I'm going to continue to use it. And we'll talk about that at another time. So, that's one thing I hope you'll act on. You want to do that now or later?
Yeah, we're not quite sure what we have to run.
Is it the motion that's on your email?
Yes.
At the bottom of the email of your packet?
Well, there's an original motion to accept the no-cost extension for the
Right.
Lubec Stockard Park. Well, yes. I've had to do that for a grant myself. They'll do it to the end of June because their fiscal year starts, and they don't want to do it past that. Yes. But that was great that you got an extension. I'll make a motion that we accept the no-cost extension for the Lubec Stockard Park Project Canopy and continue David Stockridge to facilitate the implementation of the project for Renee Gray, now the administrator. All in favor? And then there's another motion.
Well, I'm going to quickly, part of it is just looking at, you asked an excellent question, and what's the future of Stockard Park? And it just, I just wanted to highlight the whole issue of universal design, access to shore. A lot of people go down the beach over the rocks. I had my own tumble, which said, I think we need to say over the deck.
Well, I have heard of that.
So, and then access to water for small craft. And thanks to Renee, we looked at the history, the original plan for that piece of property, and that explains some of the pink granite, was that they were going to put boats in and out. Now, how they're going to do that, but I don't, but it was, well, it's a nice incline. We're going to continue to look at a healthy walking trail and put another grant in. And just looking at multiple uses for the, for the whole park when we get it cleared. And that's coming along very nicely. What I have there is my research on numerous, it's under grant opportunities, that I think could apply, all of them you'd have to approve. And I was just amazed it continued, I looked at someplace else, so national ones, state ones within. And there's a land and water conservation one that's about halfway down under agricultural conservation and forestry, which we've applied for, not applied for, but it looks very, very promising to look at, what we'd want to do down there. And then, I was at the last board meeting where you authorized Renee to pursue a grant?
The same one that you just mentioned.
That is, that's included.
Yep.
The land and water conservation, does that, does it seem to mesh with their vision? What's the ceiling on it?
$500,000, and it's 50% match and the in-kind.
Oh, the one, what, it's the same one that you're looking for, the other project? It's 50% match?
Well, we're looking at the Stockard Park.
Right, so my problem is you don't, you can't have, you can't apply to what, to two different projects?
No, that's right. No question.
But maybe we're not going to be able to do it if the same other project you're working on.
Although, that's what we're coordinating to do. I don't want, we're not going to be competitive.
Right.
But I think the opportunities are there. And the reason for that is, I think, right under Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, there's the Department of the Bureau of Forestry and Irving Woodlands that give up seedlings. I haven't heard that, but I texted and talked with Renee to sit down and saying, I've got to file this by last Friday, I think it was the 25th, to get three seedlings. And she said yes, we submitted that, but that's to let you know that it's up.
Yep, free.
Everything, no match. We just had to put them in the ground.
You, when I met with you down there with your wife, so you were talking about the hiking trail.
Correct.
So, do we, have we gotten any, have you gotten any funds for?
We've submitted one under the recreational trails grant, didn't get funded, but I think we'll be very competitive this year.
Okay, so you're going again?
Yes.
That's sometimes successful that way.
Well, I studied what we did, and it was rushed when we did it.
Right.
And now, with all the research we've been doing, just what's going on right now, I think we can.
So that, that funds would, would pay for the hiking? Not hiking, jogging, track, track. That's good.
Well, you'll see that before we submit it, so.
Okay. So, you want us to authorize Renee to pursue appropriate opportunities for funding? I would have to confer with Renee, and you'll have time to do it?
David probably will do it, he doesn't tell me to sign.
Well, it says right here to authorize Renee to pursue appropriate opportunities for funding and present recommendations or applications to support activities to the board. So, so are you okay with that motion that says that you would be looking for the opportunity?
Yes, if that's what the board wants, I'll do it for it. I mean, if it's after November.
So you're going to do most of the legwork for her?
I will, yes, I agree with that.
Well, then, I would authorize Renee, along with Mr. Stockford, to pursue appropriate opportunities for funding assistance and present recommendations to support activities to the board. So, we'll do like a combined effort.
Thank you, that's a wonderful, it really has.
I need to say that.
Another word, yes, right.
Yeah, finish that, there we go. Yes, we think it's great that you've taken this on, and yes, I love the stones. It was a long time coming, because I was, this is my seventh year, and my first year here, I saw it in the closet, and I always wanted to set it in stone. We kept working on it and working on it, finally, and I can't take any credit for it because it did get done, but I'm glad that it did.
We are also.
I know that Denise and the, I mean, I don't know, many finally put that together, and it really was.
Our family that want to come in the town are really appreciative when they combine a lot.
It's really nice.
Renee and the work people have been super.
And your wife?
Yes.
Has been doing all the curb, sod removal.
It was very nice, pretty long.
That's excellent.
All summer. Margery.
Thank her as well.
Well, I have, she did too. Good birthday. She'd be down there for a couple of hours.
It's really nice.
It's a lot of work.
Yes, well, something to do that, besides all the grant seeking. That can definitely be a full-time job. Well, thank you very much.
Likewise.
Move on.
Very excited.
Renee, fire truck?
In your packet, there is information from the bond bank. The interest rate came in, it's going to be a fluctuating one, apparently, but at this time, we're looking at, I'm on page, what's it, page?
We did sign the papers for making it a, a variable. It's not going to be fixed?
It says the average coupon will be .658%.
But, it changes each year, doesn't it? Okay, so we haven't signed the last final thing yet, correct? We haven't signed the paper. Okay, so they gave us what they think is, they projected. So it is, it's really low, so I don't think it's too much to worry about. It's only four or five years, right? So, I don't imagine, who knows, interest rates? So five years. Usually they say it's a certain point over the lowest amount of the Fed, whatever the Feds come up with, it's an X amount of points.
It's usually plus a mile. Yeah, it's usually plus a mile.
Yes. So, but anyway, we don't need to make a motion on this, correct?
No, it's just information.
So, I think we, I spoke a length to the lady from Bond Bank, and this is better than she'd anticipated for projection. It's like under 1%, so that's pretty good. Yes.
Regarding the fire truck discussion, you sent a letter out recently to people who have had to serve the way of asking if there was help we're going to.
And we had some good news on that. Renee?
We received a $5,000 donation from one entity, Britain, and a $1,000 donation from somebody not on the list. They read your article, John.
Excellent.
And donated a thousand, so thank you.
So we have $6,000.
Yes.
So from the 13th, that's the number.
Yep.
We got one of them so far.
Yes.
The five thousand.
Yes.
And then another one.
Just volunteered, we're allowed to send a check in for the fire truck.
Yep.
Somebody that recently moved here.
So you could send in a smaller check for the fire truck.
Oh, yeah.
Right. We won't look anymore.
In the case of the person, they also like copies of your books.
Probably at this point.
They'd like copy of all your books.
Either yourself or myself, one of us. One of us, maybe the Bibleist should call up and say, did you receive the letter? How are you feeling about, because we're working on our financing now. So I think a follow-up call to the other 12 people would probably be helpful. I mean, so I will certainly help you do that.
Sure.
If you want to divide the list, no problem.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm really happy about it, it was really good. Actually, that was Renee's idea, so fantastic idea. Very good. Sign local road assistance program.
This is something that we do every year. This is money that the state gives us for road improvement. We always use it for paving. It's something that we have to sign, you have to sign. And the amount is.
Oh, rap, right?
Yep. The amount is lower this year due to the COVID and the state. We're losing about $2,500, $2,469 short of what we received last year.
So we used to get like about $38,000?
Thirty-six, uh, thirty-six eight four hundred, forty is what we got last year.
So we're getting less than that?
So this year we're getting 34,371.
It is what it is, we're glad we're getting something. But we did sell that property.
Do you want to do a motion?
Yes.
Oh yeah, I'll make, we'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we sign the, the local road assistance program.
Second.
All in favor? So, the quick claim deed that we're signing next, is that for the property at the North Lubec Road?
Yes, it is.
And so that was what we ended up selling for, eighty, seventy, what was it, seventy?
Seventy something.
Seventy-one?
Something, yeah, 71,000.
So all of that is gone because we signed an article, and all of it going into road?
Well, most of it. It'll pay off for four years of tax.
Right. Minus the tax vote on the property.
Yep.
Tax going to pay each and all.
That's excellent. The quick claim deed, we need to, Dan, you want to make a motion to sign it?
Motion to sign the quick claim deed, the place where it's covered.
Second.
Are we skipping?
All in favor? Make sure you put your, do you see it on the little name? Were we supposed to do this in blue?
No, that doesn't matter. That's the one that you need to witness, John, who?
Do you have appointment papers or something, are we still dealing with appointments?
Yep.
I can see that now.
This is for revolving loans for Mike Scovani, Safe Harbor Committee Jock Lyons, Safe Harbor Committee Ralph Dennison, Safe Harbor Committee Jay Binsmore, Safe Harbor Barbara Salito, Mike Scovani, Safe Harbor Carol Dennison, Peter Boyce, and James Fitzgerald, and Julie.
Did you get Barbara's letter on that? I make a motion that we appoint the people that Renee just said, so we don't have to repeat that.
That's two seconds.
All in favor? Dividing contract? I'll just go ahead and sign it.
I can give you the task force update while you're doing this.
That's perfect.
This is the group that came out of that whiting meeting, do you remember, we did a year ago?
Mm-hmm.
Rachel has been the face of Lubec on that committee, in her absence, I've been added to it. And at the last Zoom meeting last week, the group has come to the point where they want to study a town, and I quickly volunteered Lubec. So Lubec is the first guinea pig to be analyzed by everybody. And the group had come up, wanted, the group to come up with questions for each town. And if nobody really had any at that point, it's just so new. But since the meeting closed, I had a question pop into my mind. And you can let me know if you agree, but this will be my first question. And that is, what if 100% of Lubec's property were put in open space? And theoretically, there's nothing on the tax rules that could stop. I mean, nothing on the laws to stop that. My, we couldn't say 100%, the ones that have structures.
So much.
But people could take their property and have just their house and whatever it's sitting on, and put the rest of it in open space, which is canon, has been happening. What if that happens in the town? That's my question.
I can't sign my own appointment papers, so we're going to have to wait. I mean, I'm obviously on the Safe Harbor Committee, whether I've sworn in. I've sworn the Constitution on other committees. Alibied by whatever the swear in is, but. Cannot sign my own. I can't point myself.
That's my question.
No, no, imagine if I had to point myself to everything. That would be terrible.
That would be mine.
No.
So that's just in information.
That's great. So when is that going to start?
I'm not sure. But I'll keep you all updated. I know we've got a revaluation we're looking at, we've got November elections that are going to be.
We have to put that out to bed.
Yeah. Yeah. Jim is working on the commitment now. Once that project for him is done, he will be working on the, he's actually already been seeking an RFP that we can, you know, kind of tweak, make our own for that project. But that's going to be huge, that's going to be so good for the town.
In a lot of ways.
Very.
The reassessment?
Yes.
Oh, you said you had some other hits that you wanted to mention?
Yes, a bid, the bid. I called, remember the bandstand? We got one bid, but the amount wasn't on it. I called the company the other day, we couldn't believe he had done that, and it came in today. I didn't know what it was, so I did open it, but I didn't look at it.
We shouldn't even, we agreed to rebid it, so we shouldn't, we shouldn't even open it.
We, yeah, we agreed to rebid.
It's my opinion.
So, you put it out, right?
I have it, because it's fall, we didn't know.
I think, well, I think it needs to be put out for spring, because people are getting their work for spring. I think if you said that you're looking for someone to do it in the spring, then you're going to get bid.
And I didn't know.
But right now, it's too late.
I mean, everybody's going to be booked up for at least six to eight months, so it's not a bad way to put it out.
I think it should be put out, so that when the weather's good, that we get some. And it should be called, the local contractors.
I did.
You called, yeah, but you didn't say spring.
I said anytime, I left it open, because I knew that it would be booked this year.
I can get the word out.
Okay, thank you.
I can just a few of them.
Okay.
Like all of them? Yes, it would be great if we could get somebody.
But the problem is it's going to be insured, and that's a, I did call, the one that I called, they don't have insurance. And they wouldn't, I said, well, you can bid it into your price, get insurance for long enough of the project.
And what the insurance does is it protects the town and the homeowner.
Yeah, you have to have insurance.
Yeah, I mean, my boss is a roof, and I'm not insured. They pay more. Million dollars.
Well, anything else?
Yes. The managers meeting. So I go to quarterly Washington County Town and City Manager meetings. We pick different towns to meet in every quarter, so basically four times a year. During COVID, we met during, via Zoom, more often to keep in touch with each other on what, how we're dealing with things. And at the last meeting, one of the other managers mentioned it would be great, because I was talking about our projects here, and he's like, I'd love to be able to come to Lubec and go through the town for a tour. So we both thought it was a great idea, so. Friday is our first meeting in Danforth. We're going to start in Danforth, and if I have your blessing, I would like to, I'm be traveling with the county manager, Betsy Fitzgerald, and Louis Pinkel from Millbridge. And we're going to go to Danforth and have lunch and take a tour of the town.
Yeah, that's wonderful. And we're going to do it.
Quarterly?
Yes, so what, so it's not monthly, it's quarterly?
It's quarterly, but this, we might do it to get each town in and then be done. This is just a one little project, to go to each town and see, maybe I can bring something back to Lubec that I've seen in another town.
Yes, it's a great idea, I think it's absolutely, I make a motion you attend.
I'm doing that Friday.
Second.
All in favor? Anything else?
Yep. And coastal cleanup, I just wanted to remind the public, the coastal cleanup is September 27th through October 4th. And the last thing is what David kind of touched on, the LWCF funds. I talked with the man in charge of that, Doug Beck, and he said to go big, basically. I was at first, when this first came about, I was thinking, I'll, I'll public. I was at first, when this first came about, I was thinking all public works, build a road.
That I originally found and told you the why for that?
It is.
It just happened to come through the email. I said, Renee, this is perfect for your idea.
He says to go big. He's like, build a maintenance building or, you know.
Cover it with sand.
Right.
Definitely.
And he is coming on November fifth to do a site survey. Tomorrow, I'm going at one o'clock to meet Melissa Lee. I called Melissa to try to figure out if we want to incorporate a boat landing at this site. And I know that she's recently been working on one down at Bailey's estate. She's trying to get some kind of figure to throw in this budget.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to do not only a green recreational tent site, camp site, but it would maybe primitive. Couple of well toilets with supply of water and then hopefully a put-in for the clambers because they did lose some of their access. And we own this. And so the grant is based on conservation of land coupled with recreation. It's a perfect fit for what Renee had come up with of what to do behind public works. And I know she's met with Ricky. And I think it would actually draw people. Well, there's no, there's only, there's a few camp sites on the Butler properties. But he has so much property that a lot of the people that like to go to those trails also like to tent. You know, they like to do tenting.
And it would help the local business.
Yes.
Well, I, I think, have you been out walking yet?
You did?
Oh, yes.
So it would be. So I'm going tomorrow at one o'clock with Melissa Lee. That's how she got involved is I know I asked her and she volunteered to walk it with me.
Yes, so.
Has anybody offered that?
Oscar Emerson, who designed, designed the, will help with the historical building and designed the Safe Harbor with, along with the committee and has offered to help you with that. He's done two other campsites. So he's willing to come up and do that as well. So you can maybe meet the, when is the person coming that you're meeting?
November fifth.
What question about that property? I remember, was it a year ago, I guess, there was named a grinding shed for transporters over there? They're still there?
I presume, yes.
And is that, how does that affect, was your question about?
It's forty acres.
I imagine that what you're going to have to, it's possible that you could put that in the grant that you needed to clean that site up.
Most of it's still down. It's down there. The water, lower water.
It is?
Yes.
Well, you'll find that. Do you do the water?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When you do the grant, you're going to put in cleanup, clean up, mine for cleanup and get rid of it. Yes. Yes. It's a half, five hundred thousand dollars.
We're restoring it for the landmarks.
For a year.
Years ago.
What I was looking at was whether or not you could harvest some of the wood.
I don't forget much.
Excellent.
What? Sorry?
You know, going back to the forty acres. Have the state forest, I want to have a good one there to look at. And you go in there and harvest.
Yes, right.
I mean ecologically sound. And.